Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the June 21st, 2023 meeting for the Franklin Board of Education. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
And Dr. Beer will be arriving later.
Thank you. And can we have a, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Dr. Kahn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Community comment. Does anybody wish to comment? I don't know if you filled out your card or not, Mary.
I did. What?
I don't. We'll get it later.
We'll grab it.
Here in Carolina, it's been too late. West Covin, I promise this won't be as dramatic as last month, but I appreciate, I've cut out the budget and I appreciate all the work that you're trying to do that Mr. Cromie has done. And I know that you work very hard to do what's best for the kids and for our community. With that, I'd like to thank the Wellness Committee for working on the policy. I'm glad this is being updated. But I would, as a mother and also as a school employee who works at the elementary level, I would like to suggest that perhaps we look to different menu items, choices for students. Last, in the month of May, out of the 23 meals, just through May, only nine of them were, didn't have cheese in them. And then also, our alternative lunch is a muffin meal, which is a huge chocolate muffin, cheese stick and yogurt. And unfortunately, I didn't think to print out any other school district menus from other districts, but I did manage to get one from Old Creek. And it seems like the food dietitian there has some interesting options for an elementary lunch menu besides our usual hamburgers and cheeseburgers and nuggets and stuff. He has, for instance, a chicken Caesar salad. This is the elementary lunch menu. Or chicken turkey and cheese flatbread Lunchable, or a chicken wrap. And I think that we just need a little more variety, considering that we have many different ethnic groups that we serve. And I noticed that children, a lot of the children bring their own lunch, and they have rice and vegetable type meals, which we might consider. I think we need to introduce our students to the global environment that we live in. And that might be one way of introducing some different meals. Also, I looked at the senior meals, and they have things there, too, that maybe we could implement in our district. So I'd like to thank those individuals that worked on that. And then I also appreciate Mr. Sprague and Mr. Cromie going and speaking to the legislature. It's not an easy task to do. But I noticed that this year, we will have an increase in the employee health and dental premiums, so 10% for the health and 2% for the dental. And I'm not sure whether that's your costs or whether that is for employees. But we talked about the 4% compensation, and I know things are not in place yet, but I'm hoping that when you talk about compensation, or if you can talk about compensation, not poor, that you would consider that when you have increases, this diminishes any type of monetary compensation that they have to live on. So I hope that you will remember that. I personally do not get any help for dental insurance through the district. I don't have it at this point, but I know that there are people who do, and there are also people who would like it, and I hope to look into that a little bit as well. Lastly, I noticed that our enrollment for in-district students is small. We have a larger open enrollment number, but when I looked through the staffing, I noticed that, and I know things are not settled yet, I noticed that we have three kindergarten K-5 positions that were technically eliminated. I know that at PD, we have a number of families who are not returning for various reasons. And I know that families now are being paid, basically, to go to voucher schools. And if you weren't aware, if you go to a voucher school and you're in the K-8 program, you get $9,500, and that goes to each child, so that's going to the family. If you are in high school, you get $12,000 this year. And if you go to a charter school, you get 11. And if you do go to, if you have a special needs child, that child will get $13,076. There's no public oversight with this money. We have to assess it through our levy. Oftentimes, the number of children that attend these voucher schools either have not been in our district, or there are not enough of them where it would make a difference with our staffing. So I guess what I'm asking is, I'm hoping that you have a plan, a marketing plan, to show how, what we have to offer as a public school district, how we can help them see value in Franklin Public Schools. And will, can we entice people who are sending their children to voucher schools to come back or to come to Franklin Public Schools? But this is kind of a, we're kind of waging a battle here. And the tax payers in any district, you know that, 70% of them don't have children in school, myself included at this point. So I'm hoping that there is a plan in mind or that you will talk about that so that we don't lose more children or families, and we can somehow make up the funding that we will lose because we have to make it up if not coming through the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That concludes, that concludes community comment. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. There's a regular Board of Education meeting July 12th at 6:00 p.m. The annual meeting of the electors is Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. And a regular Board of Education meeting following it at 7:00 p.m., obviously both at the ECC. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. So we are excited that we wrapped up the school year, had about a week of a buffer in there to get ready and turn our buildings over for summer learning. We have high numbers this year, I think record high over maybe even the last number of years, but definitely since the numbers we had directly before COVID. So at our elementary, grades 1-5, we have 530 students enrolled. Our 6-8 program, this is just for enrichment, has 200 students. So currently, that's all running out of Forest Park. And, you know, shout out to the entire team that did the planning for this, as we've had videos out for traffic flow, we've had, I think, all hands on deck from the ECC to go over and ensure safety, to help kids find their classrooms. And it was really exciting to be over there on day three today and see even the littlest ones, the biggest learners, helping each other out, finding their way to the classroom. Traffic's been smooth, so it's just been a really great experience. So that's 730 students working through that building right now. We have another 243 incoming sixth graders sign up for our August transition program. So it's really nice to see those numbers growing. Our high school program has 372 students between enrichment and then also that freshman transition class that's coming up, and 78 students that are working on some kind of credit recovery or work right now to ensure they're on track as they come back next school year. So thank you to all of our staff that's here for the extra hours this summer, putting in the extra time with our learners and just making it a great enrichment environment for our students. One adjustment we will see on the agenda tonight that I'd emailed the board about today, too, in keeping with our doing a first read and then a second read of items to vote, we're bringing forward the annual academic standards tonight. This is the annual adoption that's outlined by state statute that has to happen each year at the first meeting of the new year. This isn't our deep dive work into prioritizing standards and looking at our continuous curriculum review cycle. That'll come late fall, early winter, but that's why you see that tonight, so that we can take action and vote on it at our July meeting. And then later in the year, Mr. Blessington will come forward with the deeper work that all of our departments are doing in that area. The other item you'll see come back in July is our coherence plan. Sometimes we go through that in June. This year, we pushed it out to allow some guests to be with us during that timeframe. So those are kind of our two big teaching and learning moments is what July will be focused on when we come back together. A really exciting piece for us as a district, at least that's my personal opinion, is At Your Spot, and this will be hitting all mailboxes in the city of Franklin within the next couple days, is our first look at a newsletter that comes from the district, from all of the city, kind of to Mary's point, actually, that not everybody has students in the school. We're trying to find new ways to be intact with everybody in the community, letting them know what we stand for, what we work on FPS, and then also helping them to know what are other ways you can learn more about us. So it includes on the back a QR code. Hopefully, we can get more community members to sign up even for our district newsletter or school newsletters, to just see learning in action and what's taking place. But you'll see it's very aligned to our Better Place to Learn, Better Place to Work, Part of a Better Community, outlining that on the front. Our goal is to do two of these a year, starting out. This is a new endeavor for the district. And then as you look through it, there's alignment, you'll see the coding of those work, learn, and community pieces. I think another neat aspect has been that we have a number of alum that work in the district and got some really nice quotes from them and included it. So we're excited to share that. You get a sneak peek. Like I said, it should hit mailboxes this week or early, early next week. And then our final wrap-up celebration of the 2223 school year comes this Saturday for graduation at American Family Field at 4:00. So I'm excited to see all of our families there, a lot of our staff present and enjoy that experience. If you're not able to make it, there's also a link to watch livestream. And when you find that link on the graduation page, you can also look at our graduate walks that they did at all the elementary schools at the end of the year. It's really kind of neat to look at those and then the flow into graduation. There was a lot of, a lot of excitement and a lot of new opportunity to kind of revisit what their path has looked like in the district. So those are updates tonight. Any questions or thoughts? Let me know.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other school board business, 22, or excuse me, 2324 SWSA agreement as an action item, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. So we have the SWSA agreement. This is a group that a number of districts in the greater Milwaukee area are a part of. We've been a part of it as a district for many years, as part of the advocacy we do and the learning around what's taking place in the state. So this is just our annual review and approval as a board and then signing off on that contract to join that group.
Clearly, I put it away somewhere, but I'll be looking for a motion to approve the SWSA agreement as, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Any further discussion?
I think it's great value. They really haven't changed their amount in some time, and so very positive thing.
Yeah, we seem to get a lot of, I mean, you share a lot of information, a lot of really valuable information from that group.
Great. All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 2324 preliminary budget. It's an action item. Mr. Cromie, please.
So the budget that's before you is the same budget presented on May 24th. The formality in approving this is to ensure we can pay people come July 1, cut POs and checks for those items we need to start up school. Very typical to a regular year. We'll then bring another rendering of the budget back for the annual meeting in August, and we'll bring a final approval budget back in October with tax levy.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cromie?
I had one question, which is, I think we're psychic or something here, because I was going to ask, is there any, because obviously, the open enrollment coming in and going out looks pretty consistent over the years, but is there any commonality with the people that are, that are not enrolling in our district? I like wrote that on my phone, and then I'm like, she's, Mary's saying it almost exactly my question.
The typical open enrollment student never sets foot in your district. They move into Franklin or any community from another community that they were previously attending school, and they continue to attend school there. Or mom or dad enroll them in a school that's close to work for convenience, if they're sick, whatever have you. So the vast majority never attend Franklin.
So the voucher, the whole voucher thing isn't really impactful?
Voucher is entirely different. So open enrollment and voucher are two totally separate things. Voucher are people attending a private school, so to speak, so that's a little bit different. I would say the vast majority of private school students have attended private school throughout and never attended Franklin either. Now they're just able to qualify for vouchers. So the dollar amount, the threshold for a family income used to be pretty low when the voucher program started, with really the intention of students who don't have access to it, to provide them to it. That threshold has gone up exponentially, so now there are people who were attending private school are now getting the voucher payments for it, so more people are qualifying as well. So that's, again, most of them have never attended here.
And you have a different awareness. On open enrollment, there's an application process, and you're aware, you're not always aware of who's going to private or voucher schools, that it's not something that they apply to get into, they just apply to that school to go there. So you don't have as easy tracking to understand who those students are.
Yes. Can we make a concerted effort? Sounds like we really can't.
There's 100% tracking mechanism for open enrollment because we have a portal, we log in, you can see every kid, address, where they're coming from, where they're going to, all the things that you need. For vouchers, we are given an amount at the end of the year that comes off and we end up paying the state. That's all we know. We have no idea who it is or how many or special ed, non-special ed, any, name any factor, we have no idea.
Answers that. Thank you.
Linda, please.
Well, I'm, before we approve this, I would like to make amendment to the budget. And before I make my amendment, I want to share some information with everybody. So I'm going to pass this out. I think.
No, there was just three.
Look at chair.
Okay. Oh, here's the next one. Okay. And the chart that you have in front of you is just tax levy, and it looks historically from 2015 to the currently proposed budget. And tax levy, as you know, it's, there's separate buckets. There's the general fund, which is controlled entirely by the state. There's the private school, which is the voucher program, which Andy just explained. There's the referendum debt, and then there's the community service, which is really the rec department. So that's what is part of total levy. And then the next line is the total levy change and the percent change. So you can see how since it's been zero in 2017, 1.1, 1.2, 1.5, 0 in 2021, and actually was reduced in the 21 budget, and then we have 3.2 last year's budget. And the current budget that we have in front of us is currently at 5%. And then also below that is the change in the different categories. So you can see that a lot of change happens in the general fund, which is entirely driven by the state. And then the voucher program, to Andy's point also, it is a program that is a little scary given the, how it's changed. And then the referendum debt, you also see how that has changed over the years, and most recently, last year, was increased $2.5 million. And then we have the community service piece, which you understand, we are adding 1.8 million this year for the building of the building. The next line is the valuation, which helps determine our rate. And you can see how that has grown, and particularly in the 2223 budget year, 12%. Andy's predicting 5%. I have actually been with the city, because I actually was concerned about my valuation and went in and attempted to challenge it unsuccessfully, which is not news. And then the last piece is the rate. So the reason I'm showing the rate is because you'll see that the rate has been going down since the left of the chart. And you'll notice that it actually relates, it's inversely related to valuation. As valuation goes up, the rate goes down. Now, the reason I'm showing the rate is, well, the motion I'm going to make is to reduce the bond defeasance that is in this budget. It's currently at $3.2 billion. And I would want to make the motion, I'll do it later, to reduce that by 1.5, I'm sorry, yes, by 1.5, which is the last column. You'll see that everything else stays the same, except for referendum debt is reduced. And that results in a 0.7% increase in the levy. Now, I'm going to just give you three, three points on why I would support that, and I think you should also support it. First of all, on the debt service. As you know, this is referendum debt, which means the voters approve that debt. And when the voters approved the middle school debt, they didn't sign up for an accelerated repayment plan that required increasing their levy, which is what we did last year. We increased it $2.65 million. They didn't sign up for that. They didn't approve that when they voted. They understood they were going to get, I mean, we, our debt currently is, we have very favorable rates, and we have a very stable repayment plan, which extends over the life of the building. That's good policy. It spreads the cost of the building over the cost, and people pay for it as they use it. That's good policy for debt. Again, we don't have to repay the debt. The second point I want to make is, the state has revenue limits in place to control property taxes. That's what their goal is. So you'll see their attempts, but then, so the line, so the property, the general property tax is really controlled by the state. We don't make, we can't decide anything about that. They give us more money one year, we have to put in the levy to increase it. But then, at the local level, the school board increases levy for debt that in effect goes around these limits and around voter approval. Is this good policy? I would say no. And then the third reason is, we have been told that we're managing our levy growth based on a stable property tax rate. You'll see our rate as proposed, as presented in this budget is 8.43, which is the same rate as was established last year.
The mill rate you're talking about?
The mill rate, yes. Because that's what we've been told. Andy says stable rate, which would be the focus. That's our guidepost. But as you can see, that's never been our focus. And in fact, this is unsustainable. If we had done that every year, we would be, we would have raised our rates, raised our levy, 5.7, 4.7, 8%, all the way across here. That's not, we don't approve the rate. We approve the levy. We approve a total property levy, which is levied against the property through a calculation of the rate. We don't approve the rate, it's calculated. And as you know, property valuations can change due to economic cycles. Inflation can be high, new construction can be one year up or down, and that is not an indication of a community's capacity to generate new revenue. So you can't just keep your rate and apply it to valuation. Valuation is not a good indicator, which again, is why the state focuses on levy, and we should too. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to reduce bond defeasance by 1.5 million from 3.2 to 1.7, which would change the tax levy increase to 0.7% in this, in
Looking for a second to the motion.
Would you just please repeat that again with the numbers to reduce the bond defeasance?
By 1.5 million.
To, from 3.12 million.
From 3.2 to 2, to 1.7. It's the numbers here at the top, right in the corner of your sheet.
Oh, I see it. Okay. So now you're looking for a motion to, for a second, a second.
Yeah, there's a motion that's been made.
To Mrs. Wukowski's motion.
To Mrs. Wukowski's motion.
I will second that.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded for a, for a change in the budget. I would say that, I would say that I think this is, I think that this is not a good idea, and I will not be voting for it. And the reason, the reason I will not be voting for it is, I think that, I think that we don't know, well, first of all, we voted on defeasance several times, and I think, I think the vote has been clear that, that this board thinks it's a good idea. And, and I think that we, with the uncertainty in where the budget is, I do not think that, I do not think that we want to, I don't think that we want to take this step. Perhaps, perhaps others have a different view. I know, I know Mr. Cromie wanted to say something about, with perhaps some, with perhaps some information.
Yep. I would just.
I guess, this is our debate, not Andy's debate, so unless you have a question, I don't know if he really has the floor. Because it's the board's debate.
Okay, you don't have the floor.
Linda, you know, with the scenario where we don't pay the debt, but we also, of course, we have a good rate.
I just want to clarify, we are paying our debt as we're allocated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We are paying the rent, but not with 3.2 interest. You're proposing 1.7. How much of money will we save? Of course, the tax rate is there, but because the valuation of the property, the mill rate is definitely kind of, you know, is one thing where we, it looks favorable, but understand that mill rate, you know, property value keeps going up, you know, so that's the reason the mill rate is going down, which seems to be the scenario. But if we pay right now this extra, 1 point, what, what, 1.7, we pay 1.32, how much of money will we save on that?
We are going to be saving a tax of increase.
Do you have an answer to that question? How much money are we going to save? The answer is we're not approving a defeasance tonight. It's a preliminary budget where a holding amount is placed in for defeasance. Choosing to go to 1.7 or stay at 3.2 tonight isn't approving a defeasance. Just like last year, we have to bring an official resolution to the board that lays that information out, just as we did last year. So changing it to 1.7 doesn't do anything tonight because that official resolution hasn't even been written or drafted. I have not taken it to our financial advisor to get any information on what rates are, what that reduction would look like in terms of interest. I'm simply holding it in the revenue limit, looking to keep the mill rate flat. Thank you. For, excuse me, just one second, man. Dr. Beer is, has just joined us. Thank you. And could you please, could you please repeat the motion to the budget that Mrs. Wukowski made?
Mrs. Wukowski made an amendment to the motion to reduce the bond defeasance. Mrs. Wicowsky made an amendment to the motion to reduce the bond defeasance by 1.5 million dollars from 3.12, 3.2, 3.2 million to 1.7.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to say, I appreciate, Linda, that, the work that you put into this and your explanation of how it all works and your, your reasoning. I appreciate all that. I, actually, Mr. Cromie answered my question of, was the defeasance really what we were talking about tonight? And I think he's answered that it's really not. And I, I think I would need more time with this to understand it and talk about it more before I would be comfortable voting in support of it. Just because these are, these are not numbers that I've spent the last, you know, however many days looking at. So just to get this kind of last minute is kind of like, I would need more time with it. And I don't think, and like I said, I think that's what Mr. Cromie just answered, I don't, I don't think that's what we're really looking at approving tonight.
Should we make this decision? Should we vote? What, what do you see? So basically, you're, what you're asking for, Linda, is a, is, is a reduction to the budget of, of $1.5 million? 1.7 million?
1.5 million. It still allows us to defuse funds. It's not, we're not going away from that entirely. There is still $1.7 million that will be prepaid, but it gives our taxpayers a break. Not even a break. I mean, it's, makes the increase 0.7% as opposed to 5%, which is following a 3.2% increase after years of nothing more than 1.5.
Mr. Cromie, if we decided to make this change, if we decided to make this change tonight, or, or, or at the annual meeting, would there be, would there be any difference in, in what we, what we do going forward? If we spoke about this, what would the change be?
Or it still has to approve the official resolution. So I would punch a different number in the Skyward, lowering the debt revenue, debt payment, that's all it would do. It's not approving anything. It's not approving a tax levy. It's not approving the defeasance amount. It's changing that document, 1.7 million or 1.5 million dollars.
Yes, Linda?
At the annual meeting, I don't believe the, it's the lecturers that kind of approve those documents.
When the final budget is approved, is what I mean.
Which is really in?
October.
But this, I mean, I guess, Andy, you make it sound like this doesn't do anything. It does reduce property tax levy.
We're not setting the property tax levy tonight. So on a piece of paper, I guess technically it would reduce it, but we haven't set a levy yet in order to tax the citizens of our school district, so.
I think if the board votes to do this, it does give you pretty firm direction on what we would expect you to bring back to us in August and October.
All right. Does anybody else have further comment?
I would just echo what Mrs. Sapursky said about, I would like more time to look at this and think this through. Definitely, to me, it sounds at first blush, a good idea. It really does. But just correct me, please, if I'm wrong, and I know you've said it like three times. So tonight, if we approve this budget, it's simply so we can start paying our bills July 1st.
Correct.
Okay. If we were to get more information, as Mrs. Sapursky alluded to, say from Mrs. Wicowsky, we would need to have that as an agenda item, and we would spend some time discussing it. We would get information beforehand so we could look it over before we made that final decision, correct?
Correct.
All right. Then I would ask that at some point, that could be put, or at the next meeting, that Mrs. Wicowsky's idea could be put on the agenda for discussion, and that we could move ahead with the motion as it is presented then by Mr. Cromie, so we can pay our bills.
We need to vote on the amendment.
We need to vote on the amendment. So looking for.
Would we just be tabling it? Is that an option?
No, because we have to approve this tonight in order to pay our bills tomorrow, or July 1st, or whatever.
They were saying to add it, well, add an agenda item to the future meeting where you can bring the presentation so that your board has the opportunity to review it ahead of that meeting. Tonight, it's allowing us to pay bills come July 1, because we don't have another meeting before then. And then we can bring this forward to talk about further.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like a vote on the amendment, please.
All right, a roll call vote?
Please.
All right, Mr. Sprague?
I vote no.
Dr. Beer?
No.
Mrs. Wicowsky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Says no, for now, because we want some more information and we kind of decide in July.
Correct. Mrs. Sapursky?
No.
Mrs. Yank?
No, I too need more information.
And I would also vote no. I need more information as well.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the preliminary budget for 23, 24 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Any further discussion?
I think that the 5% is too high, and we should do what we can to reduce that. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this budget as presented.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Wicowsky?
No.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion passes.
Thank you. HVAC technician position, also an action item, Mr. Cromie, please.
So this, since I, I came to Franklin, this has been kind of kicked around with Casey Stumble before his resignation and Andy Daniels since he's come on board. In my previous two districts, this is something that we've employed HVAC, electrician, carpenter, in West Alice, West Milwaukee, we have plumber too. So all contracted, they could pull permits, they could do all of those things. Ultimately, what you see before you is, we currently have a maintenance agreement, approximately $206,000 is that maintenance agreement for our HVAC equipment. That's some preventative maintenance, that's some reactive maintenance is included in there. Additionally, we are looking at a boiler treatment agreement for an additional $15,000. So all in, we're at about $221,000. What we would like to replace that with is an HVAC person to have in our buildings and grounds team. Ultimately, what you see before you is, it's approximate wash in year one. So we're going to have to hire this person, we'll assume they're fully benefited. We're going to need to get them a vehicle, we're going to need to out them with some specific tools used in those HVAC processes. So essentially, what we would do is trade those contract dollars in the budget, we'd add a salary and benefits component, we'd add a vehicle component and some tools. So really just swapping apples for oranges, but the net is still the same. The long term is really in year two, we're not buying a vehicle, we're going to have to upgrade some tools or purchase some new tools, but certainly not $60,000 in aggregate of tools and van. So something less than that. So in year two, we would be then looking at the buildings and grounds budget, buildings and grounds budget, and saying, we're going to reduce some of your budget because you won't need as much, add the tool piece in there. So we'll have a reduction in our budget overall. The part that we can't quantify at this particular point, and I'm going to give you a great example, is how fast we're back up and running with certain systems. So last week, at the high school, freezer motor goes down, we send staff over there, we take all the food out of the freezer, freezer goes to different locations to make sure it stays cold and frozen, takes a couple of days, they get a technician out here, they can diagnose the problem, took a couple more days to get parts and do whatever it is to fix it up. That same scenario, when I was in West Alice, West Milwaukee, Ando Creek, that freezer's back up and running within an eight-hour period. So the person that can fix it, they're licensed to fix it, they know what to do, they go get the parts, and they put the machine back up and running, in most cases, never even having to empty a freezer because it holds its temperature for a really long period of time. Those are the things that we can't quantify. So ultimately, we would like to swap out those dollars this year, one for one, for that HVAC technician, and then ultimately provide some savings back to the district in straight dollars. And we'll certainly add quantifiable time back for those particular projects. Ultimately, we would like to extend the life of our projects, so again, having the same individual working on our HVAC equipment, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, in case you're wondering what HVAC officially stands for, but having the same individual working on our particular problems saves us time. That individual's going to know where to go into a building, find those pieces, they're going to know what to check because now they're working on them, right? So they know the ins and outs of those particular pieces, what tend to be the hiccups that are happening with this machine versus that machine or this device over here. So asking for your approval to hire the HVAC technician to really create that position, and then we'll just make those dollar adjustments for future budgets.
Please, Andrew.
To what extent have you accounted for the cost that will come in terms of supplies? Did you have that included in your estimate?
So our agreements do not cover supplies. They cover time.
So that's always.
So that's a wash. We won't pay the 10% markup on them, but.
And then my other question is, where are we at in terms of this being the appropriately sized district for this position to pay for itself versus needing two people? I just worry about this person being, having too much free time, or where are we at Goldilocks-wise? Too much, too low?
Certainly not the case. This person will, we will find in years one, two, and three, as they're learning everything, they're going to be working 40 hours, maybe more, if we have emergencies or whatever have you. We also have other things that our HVAC people can do. So they're not like locked into, I can only do HVAC. There's other things that Andy Daniels will work on to make sure that they are working and being part of it. Ultimately, our next step is to start taking a look at, should the board approve this, what kind of things do we have for an electrician to do? So how do we start work? Because those two work really hand in hand together, because now we can pull permits for setting machines up. So fixing a motor, totally fine, you don't need that. But if we want to run power to that motor, or change out the power to that motor, now we have to have an electrician on board, so if we can find that person. Or we're putting in more cameras this year, we're putting in the swipe cards and all of that. Electrician can do all that work. So those will continually need to be updated, right? So Andy's then working on what's the next iteration of that? And how do we provide cost savings? That, that's really the long term, is how do we provide cost savings and better service?
Is there any, when you have one person who is a Franklin employee, and, you know, something comes up or whatever, is there any benefit to having, you know, HVAC, or us, like, if you have a contract with a company, do they have any better ability to get the parts or be able to service things? I know you're saying that our person who is here would be able to get that freezer done faster, but if that part is harder to find, is there any benefit to having a relationship with whatever the name of an HVAC company is? Or, you know, cost savings because they can buy in bulk because they're servicing so many districts and we only have the one? Like, are there any concerns that way?
So in the experience I've had in the two districts, we haven't had any concerns with that. Those HVAC people all work in the same circle, so they have the same contacts.
What about when our person is on vacation? Does he partner with a different district to watch us while he's on vacation or she's on vacation?
We haven't necessarily talked about an MOU with any other districts. Typically, at that point, if you were on vacation or she were on vacation, we would be servicing out.
So do you maintain some type of relationship with an HVAC company?
More of an on-call relationship.
Yeah, like in an emergency situation, you have somebody?
We're not providing a retainer for them, but they're aware that this individual would be on call. So we work with Illingworth, so we would maintain that relationship. It's, we're going to have things where one person's not going to be able to do all of the work. So the big units on the roof, if that goes down, most of the work they can do, but like, if we have to replace it, you got to call in Illingworth because one person's not replacing those machines, right? So there are times when we're going to still need them. And those aren't included in those maintenance agreements anyways.
I was just going to ask if there's a cost to maintaining that, like, on-call relationship with them?
Yeah, there is not. If we buy training or something with them on a particular model, we'd pay for the training, but the relationship is really Andy and his rep, and how well do they maintain that?
Linda, please.
So any concerns with the labor market and being able to find that person? And what are the, you know, equipment is constantly changing, what, can they keep up with the equipment? I mean, a larger company that does that all the time will have access to, you know, current stuff. This person's kind of isolated here.
The labor market, there's a concern with that. At every position, we pay on an hourly basis. So always going to be, one of the selling points of a school district for an HVAC person is you're not on a truck, so you're not beating the pavement, and you're not showing up at a job at 4 o'clock and then staying till it's done because that's your job. When you work at Franklin or any particular school district, we provide a couple of different things. One, we're going to provide better benefits than you're going to get out there. So we're really selling the whole package, not just the straight dollar amount. Because that dollar amount that you see on that page does not pay as well as someone driving in a truck. The second part we're going to provide is stability. They're going to work 6 to 2:30, 7 to 3:30, whatever hours we determine, and that's what they're going to work every day outside of an emergency. So there's not that hard and fast, I show up at 4, and I'm, even if it's a two-hour job, I'm staying till 6:30. Nope. In our world, most of those jobs, you could start that tomorrow at 6, finish it at 8, everything's going to be up and fine because it's still running, might just not be running optimally, but you're still getting wherever you have to go. Where in their line of work, I show up at 4, I'm there till 6:30 because it says I need to be there till 6:30. So we provide stability, we provide a whole package, that's really how we pitch these ideas. And we work to get licensed contractors to leave their current market and come join ours. In terms of the second piece, parts and all of those things, we're really working to long-term, so when we think long-term planning, standardize what is in our district. So we're not going to buy Model A up here, Model B up here, and Model C in the back just because that's what we want to do. We're going to try to buy Model A everywhere, or Model B everywhere, or C, so that we have that continuity, because that makes life a whole lot easier, not just for the HVAC person or outside contractor. It makes life a lot easier for our custodians who do a fair amount of work as well, specifically on our boilers or internal systems. So the more we can standardize that, the easier we make the work for all of the employees, and not easier in terms of, like, I don't have to do anything, but when I show up to the machine, I know exactly where the valves are or the actuators are, where I know what meters I need to read, and I have the tools because they're the same tools I'm using on 1, 2, and 3 boiler versus A, B, and C, where I might need three different tools to measure that same whatever.
Andrew, please.
This will be interesting to see how this, if we approve this, how this works out, especially in light of the fact that you're, it sounds like you're considering a similar pivot with other positions. So other than the bottom line, are there any other indicators you'll be following to determine if this is successful?
So year one is always the dollars. Follow the dollars. When we brought it over to Oak Creek, we switched in six months to, what is our time back online faster than anticipated? Because the dot, we've saved the dollar so fast that we easily accounted for the position. So now it's, how fast are we back online, or how much are we saving from having a contractor come up? Not saving in terms of dollars, but time. How much time are we saving by having our own individual come do the work versus calling somebody to come do the work?
Great. Thanks.
So the current is 221?
Correct.
Okay. And the savings from the, from the total estimated cost is 208, so right away, it's saving?
Potentially. Like, we have to go to the market, and we have a 95 to 100,000, 105,000 dollar price range, that's about where we think we can find them, but it's potential that that goes up to 107, 110. Ultimately, we're looking, can we beat 221? Can we beat that? So what you see are estimated costs, the van costs and tools, that we can find that. We'll, we'll figure that part out.
Anybody else have questions? Linda, please.
So are we approving this tonight? Because it's the first time we're hearing it, so.
We are asking for action on it tonight. We can obviously push it and do a second read later. That's not to change what we've done with practice this year, but more. If we're hiring this for the next school year, and we have this data now, like, we would want to move it so we can get the position hired. We would have had it to you two months ago, we've obviously had turnover in that role, and wanted to give Andy Daniels time to research it, the same way Casey had done under Andy. So it can be moved to be a vote in July. It just, all that does is push off our opportunity to post it and get the position hired with July 1 coming. But that's obviously an option that can be there. I guess I would ask then if we're going to push it, what, you need additional from us to seek approval for it?
Seems that oftentimes, we're having this primary read with a secondary follow-up because we're looking to get input from constituents and taxpayers, and I'm, I'm not sure that there will be a great pounding of the pavement to comment on this particular issue, but maybe I'm wrong. I'm comfortable voting on it tonight.
You know, looking at even apple and oranges, at least what hiring does, one of the benefits which I see is that down the road, we might have savings, you know? The one thing which will be possibly not work out, which will have to evaluate the end of the year after having that person, is that how many times that person called in sick, or something like that, and then it, what was the odds of that, on that day, something went bad? So on a year basis, how many times actually we had to still call the on-call person because Because this $221,000 doesn't cover servicing, all right? All that stuff, so it doesn't cover the on-call fees. So maybe there's also a possibility that we might have some extra savings other than the $13,000 which you see straight right now, possibly even more, because, so I think.
Well, certainly, you're, certainly after the first year, and, and, you know, to Linda's question, I do think that, while it's something we'd like to do generally, and we've worked on doing, is getting, getting more than one reading, so we have, people have time to think about things. I think this is, to Mrs. Bennett's point, what, what would we need further? So I, I would, I'd make a motion to approve the creation of the position and hiring of an HVAC technician.
I would second that.
All right, I made the motion, it was seconded by Dr. Khan. Further discussion?
With this, let me just ask one more question. Is this someone who would be on like a one-year contract? Or would it be a multi-year contract? Like, how would, how would the person be hired?
Yep, so really, again, part of that attraction to a school district and not making as much money as you might make on a truck, typically, we would offer them a one-year contract, so one year at a time, and make them salaried so that if we have those emergencies, we're not paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars of overtime? Like, part of it is you're on call. Ultimately, they probably swap hours the next day. So if they're here for 15 hours, for whatever reason, you're probably working an hour the next day, or just make it up, you know, add nine hours to a day, take tomorrow off because you were here for 15 hours. That's typically what we like to do. And the salary, again, the salary piece, we offer a stable environment. You're working on the same machines, your typical hours are pretty much the same, for the most part, and we offer better benefits. So we typically offer a one-year contract on that.
So, I mean, I guess my point in asking that is it's not like we're locked into a five-year contract. If we realize in this first year, like, whoa, this really isn't working the way we expected it to, we wouldn't be.
Absolutely not.
You know, committed to a multi-year contract.
Good point.
Well, and I'm taking some solace in the fact that there are many other districts. I assume Andy Daniels did due diligence in terms of looking at their results and so forth, so I feel comfortable with it.
And the possibility also is that because this person is not all the time working on HVAC, he'll also be assisting in other things. So that also, because once he tunes up all the HVACs he's done, then, okay, there are other things to be done, you know? So, so that manpower is still being used. So I think that also, we didn't count it as the, because that manpower is expensive if you get someone outside.
Agree.
You know, so I think it still seems that, at least that, although it's a first read, but it seems that it will benefit us.
All right, the motion was made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Preliminary staffing report, Ms. Lankor, please.
So a request was made at the last meeting to kind of bring forward the preliminary staffing numbers for the 23-24 school year. So the document was provided with, for you, broken down by district and then each of our levels, so elementary, middle school, and high school. Again, these are very preliminary. These are more than likely going to change as we continue to move through the hiring season, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
So you said they're likely to change as we go through the hiring season, but we, we know, we're pretty sure that this is the amount of people we need?
This is the best estimate that we have right now with the information that we have. So I say that in terms of, for example, if we have six more first-grade students move into the Countrydale neighborhood, and then ultimately that pushes us over our class-size policy, we would look to add a limited-term teacher for this year, so that we could stay within that policy range.
Is there, is there a reason that, so those kids, the 5K is going down, but grade one is not going up? Are those numbers different in the policy in terms of students? Or are we actually losing first graders?
Yep, they are not different in policy size. The policy size does not move up until third grade, or like, third, fourth, and fifth, but it would indicate that in some cases, we're kind of right on that threshold about whether or not we need additional teachers, and at this time, based on the enrollments, we would not need those to roll up into first grade.
Okay.
But we watch those really closely all throughout the summer to make sure that we're staffing accordingly for the school year.
Do you ever make a decision, if you have a class that's sort of moving up through the system, that's always right on the bubble, to sort of maybe slightly overstaff, just so that there's not the constant vacillation? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, absolutely, I understand. I think it's really a best judgment call in terms of making sure that we're appropriately using our budget dollars for the staffing that we need. So obviously, we only have a certain amount of dollars, and we, you know, a large team of all the admin, like, administration here at the table, as well as our building principals, are involved in these decisions to make sure that we are doing what's best for students. And we might, you know, be able to run two sections of kindergarten and elementary, which allows us to then hire another face teacher at the high school, because that's a huge growing interest of area for students.
Got it, thank you.
Linda, do you have a question?
So I, when we have three less kindergarten teachers, so that means we have three less classrooms, right, of kindergarten? Pretty dramatic for one-year change, I guess.
It could have also been from the kindergarten perspective. It looks like, because you're talking about one whole person, but at the same time, when we made that decision last year, it could have been because we had two additional kindergartners, and we needed to stay within class-size policy. So it's not that we've had this huge dramatic drop-off of students. It's just been, we may have lost two students, which then put us back within class-size policy.
I would say of those, there's a couple, I know everybody has the spreadsheet up watching enrollments, so there's a couple of those that are close, yeah, for right now. I'm not saying 100% sure they're going to flip, but it's not like we lost three times 20 groups of kids. They ran on the cusp. Last year, we added where they popped over, now they're back hovering, so we're watching again. It's kind of the same. So Countrydale, we added fairly late last year, if you remember. We watched that all summer, went back and forth. One thing we did do is push up online enrollment check-in, so you know, when you go in, that did not used to happen until August 1st. Now it happens June 1st, because part of the process, if we're going to add a teacher, when it's on the bubble, is to go and see, of those kids who said they were coming, how many have actually gone in and done their paperwork and are coming? And we call kid by kid by, I don't, but the school secretaries generally call kid by kid by kid. So that was very intentional, that we moved that up by two months? Because you remember, last year, we had to hire kindergarten, it was kindergarten last year, and those bubbled up too. We had to hire late, because we couldn't. And it's never 100% verified, but we don't just say, oh, there's more. We, we go back and check, are they actually coming, before we would hire?
It's a good reminder to complete that paperwork.
I was just thinking the same thing, like, ooh, I have another. Yes. In terms of staffing decisions, not necessarily specific to these numbers, but as you're talking about watching the, the bubble and the numbers per class-size policy, is there, or could you tell me about what the process is for looking at the acuity of the students in a classroom versus just the number of total bodies? You know, 24 kids in this classroom might not be the same as 24 in this classroom. How, how do we staff for that?
So that's where our principals really come into place, and they give us that feedback, because they notice, know the students best within their building. So I'm sure that a principal would be happy to, you know, vocal, be vocal with me to say, you know, I'm really struggling with the fact that, you know, I know that I have these students in this particular grade level, having them be in the particular classes and their different needs would be something that they would express. But they're pretty good about following class-size policy as well, and are very, like, accommodating and understanding.
What does that mean? I feel like, so when they express that?
They don't often express it. I'm sure that they would if they had a concern or an issue, but I haven't heard one since, or I haven't heard one as of yet.
Okay.
So are we really alluding to, like, kids with IEPs then? Wouldn't that, in effect, provide the?
I wasn't specifically.
Extra support in that classroom?
No, not necessarily an IEP, just, there are different needs in different classes, and I just was wondering if there's any, you know, discussion, instead of just looking at numbers, looking at the acuity of students. It might be IEP-related, but it could be any number of things, so.
Personalities, behaviors.
I was just going to say, personnel. I mean, you just know, if you've worked with any groups of kids, different groups of kids work differently together, and in some, that, you know, some, some groups are much more challenging than others, so I was just wondering about that.
Yep, so part of like a principal's job is to take a look at that mix and say, you know what? Andy and Moxoo, they're not getting along in class. Next year, we're going to make sure they're in two separate classes, or we might have to move an instructional aide to help between the two classes for a myriad of reasons it could be. So they kind of look at all of that, they base it on teachers' recommendations, right? That these students work really well together, or A helps B quite a bit, let's move them together, or A and B don't get along, so let's make sure that next year, they're not in the same class, so that we're not having those conflicts. So, like, all of us have kids, all right, that have gone through elementary, or most of us, like, we've seen them go through elementary with a whole bunch of the same kids, and we've also seen new kids shuffle in and out of their class. A lot of that is by accident, but a good portion of it is intentional. Like, we're just going to readjust a couple of kids here and there, because this class might have too many kids who talk out of turn, or do whatever, right? So a lot of it is just adjusted by that, or we provide an instructional aide to help. If classes get really close to the bubble, like Jess was mentioning, but we're not ready to move into a whole new teacher, we'll see how we can provide some additional help through an instructional aide to provide that kind of assistance there.
Thanks.
I see there's one extra administrator, one FTE.
So that is not actually an additional person or body? I should say, from an FTE perspective, that is purely reflecting that our new Director of Buildings and Grounds is a contracted administrator versus our former manager of Buildings and Grounds was not. So we didn't actually add a person or a position, it was just a change in the structure of their role.
So was, where was he before? Which bucket was he in?
So this report, historically, so I, I was consistent with what the board is used to seeing, this report does not necessarily account for every single employee that is within the district. Historically, this has gone through certified staff or contracted staff. More recently, last year is when we added the custodial, the food services, and the instructional aide information.
Okay, so what we have, what again, you have, what were the three kinds? Contracted staff?
So contracted staff, so like, by state statute, contracted staff? And then just last year is when the instructional aides, the custodians, the food services were added to this report.
So, and the custodian, this plus one then, is the position we just talked about, or not?
No, the administrators is the plus one.
Or that was just approved.
No, the custodian, so we are adding one more custodian this year then?
Correct.
We didn't have any space, I guess I'm wondering what generated the additional need.
It could be just an assessment of how the work is distributed among the staff. That could be what the need is focused on.
Can I ask about Spanish? In your Forest Park report, it shows Spanish going down by .5.
Yep.
An FTE, but I believe in our personnel report today, we approved the hiring of a .5, so because of increased enrollment. How does that, how do those two things balance?
So that has to do with the structure change of the schedule at the middle school for next year, so the way that the encore classes are organized, it's really dependent about how many sections of each grade level of Spanish we need to run within that program. So one factor to also take into consideration is that we look, the high school and middle school work really closely together to determine how can they utilize different teachers that are making a 1.0, so does someone start at the high school and then travel to the middle school through the day? So we needed that additional space, not necessarily referencing a 1.0, but the way that the classes are structured is that we need more people in the afternoon to teach more sections of Spanish across the board. So it's more about the time that they're working versus.
Easier said, like, two people, like, one person can't be in two spots.
Right.
So you're running classes at the same time, you need two different teachers for those courses.
And so we, we're going down from three FTE to 2.5 FTE, but we've hired an extra?
So that could be the .5 FTE that we just hired. That, that's represented in this report, so we have 2.5. So the .5 person that you approved on the personnel report is that .5 individual.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a resignation of a Spanish teacher?
I saw that too.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But it just, the number, I mean, when you're, just the way the personnel report showed, we're hiring a .5, but in this report, it looks like we're reducing by .5, so that's, I was just looking for clarification there.
Oh, I see.
What about the change in numbers? Again, I'm guessing it's because of the schedule change at the middle school, reducing our students' opportunities for those encore classes. The, when you look at the music department, the choral and orchestra positions between middle and high school, looks like both of those have been reduced. Did we actually reduce?
So that had nothing to do with the schedule at the middle school. We had some employees that asked for some accommodations in their schedules for next year, and we were able to make those for them. So that was not based on the schedules at the middle school, that was purely based on employee request.
Excellent. So then, with the art and business and face reductions at the middle school, were those, that .34, .67, .33, were those not added at the high school level to help with the increases there, or?
So it could, it could be for two different reasons. It could be that we changed, this is a difficult report in the sense of that we are calculating the exact FTE that someone works at a particular school. So it could be that we had more needs at the high school than we did at the middle school for next year, so someone is still a 1.0, but they're not working as much at the middle school, and now they're working more time at the high school.
That's what I was, again, between the, the report, the middle school and the high school, there's reduction in one and increase in the other.
That could also be student interest as well. So that's really how we staff at the middle and the high school in those areas, is based on student interest.
What, oh, I have one more question. Sorry, everybody. Was that somebody else? Okay, the, what, can you tell me about the position of the 4K coordinator? That we had, but we don't have now, or we, we needed, but we don't need now?
So that wasn't an individual, that was an additional role that someone took on that was already a 4K teacher in our district. So obviously, 4K has been implemented, and we're integrating it more into the holistic experience for our students, so that coordination role of implementing 4K is no longer needed. It's not a reduction of an individual, it's just a reduction of an assignment.
Perfect.
We've also been very, like, determined in our hiring to look at, like, what are our needs and expertise of our team that we have? So we've made some amazing hires in administrators over the last year that have expertise in, like, early childhood 4K, and so are able to also lead in that area.
All right, anybody else? Thank you very much for making that report. Board retreat discussion. Thank you, everyone, for responding. The retreat is August 9th, is that the day?
I was just pointing out, because I just slipped my mind, I was like, oh, yes. Yeah, August 9th, 6:00 PM.
So the retreat will be August 9th, and next, within the next month, there will be, one of the things we'll be talking about and why we made the change to, to the way we're doing our evaluation is, there, there are a number of evaluation questions that largely Dr. Beer and has come up with and is helping me with, to go along with the evaluations that we've had in the past, that will be sent out so that, so that we can, so that everybody can answer those questions. The administration will also answer the questions, and we'll look to move forward and set our goals for the next year based on how we, how that evaluation turns out, and we'll set our goals based on, based on how we want to move forward with evaluation.
Mike, was there some conversation? I believe Mrs. Wacowsky had requested it, to actually see the questions prior to actually administering the survey, just to make sure that they're capturing everyone's concerns and they're good with everyone, so could, could we possibly send them out for a first read?
Yes.
Prior to actually administering the survey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I think the, the survey, I hope it will just, I hope it will just live, so we, we, when we, when we go over the, so that we can continue, so that we can evaluate ourselves and, and, and have a conversation, more than just being a, this is, answer these questions, and now we'll, and now we've done that for this year, and we can check that box.
So is it, I mean, I haven't seen the questions, I don't really know. But the past have been, like, tools that we've gotten from other state associations that do this work. So have you just gone completely away from that, or where are we going?
No, no, no.
I've looked into other tools, and sort of tried to address how we've done things in the past, evaluating how we've worked on the goals that we set last year, how we function as a board, and how we can identify our goals as a group, and then individually for our leadership to focus on in the upcoming year.
But this is not a part of the, board retreat will be a different thing, where we talked about where you might get a delegate from WASB, or something to kind of educate us, kind of, you know, more about, for example, I think we talked about in the past, I think, discussion, topics about how to address constituents, you know? Or how to, for example, even, you know, get more depth about budgets, you know? Something like that, where I think, you know, more we have something like, you know, like, educational part of the retreat would be very helpful, I think.
That would be like a professional development through the, through the year, not necessarily on the night of the retreat, I think.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes, there'll be some sort of...
Yes and yes.
You're right, we do need to have something like that, some sort of workshop, and I think we, I think the answers to the evaluation will, will help us, will help guide us in what, in what that needs to be. And as in the past, there will be some sort of workshop during the year on the same night as a meeting, likely. Maybe the workshop will start at 5:30, and then the meeting will start at 6:30, on the, on the regular board meeting date. So that we can, but, but it'll be based on what the evaluation says. And Linda, to answer your question a little further, the framework will be, there's WASB, that, that framework that we've used, and the evaluation from before.
We weren't trying to change things to change the spirit of evaluation, just more to engender more conversation. Oftentimes, the evaluation would be done, we'd see the results, and we'd move on with our day. So we're just, we just tried to craft something that would hopefully spark a little bit more useful conversation.
And you'll be sharing that with us next couple of weeks?
Yes.
On Mike's desk.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions, anything further?
I just, I'm gonna be clear, so the, our evaluation is the same thing as the retreat? Or, or it kind of rolls together? We're gonna have this retreat that's gonna involve a conversation on evaluating us that will then roll into...
Evaluating us, setting goals for, based on the evaluation for...
As a retreat, it's really a board evaluation and goal setting.
Yeah.
That's the agenda.
Yes.
I think that's fair.
Yes. I'd say that's, I'd say yes to that.
How much time have you allocated for that?
Hour and a half is what we have on the calendar right now.
Because I think, when I joined the board, we talked about, we were trying to read that book, you know, Judy even had a chapter on this stuff, but I think... But I definitely would like, you know, if we can have, even from the hour and a half, you know, even a half an hour, some kind of education. Of course, we were evaluating our evaluations, and, but also some kind of a educational event, just to kind of, you know, for example, I'm very passionate about literacy. How we can, and what can we do as a board to enhance the administrators, you know, in literacy aspect? Something like that, where I think it's, I think, you know, as a board, I'd definitely like to use that retreat part, at least a portion of it, at least, for some kind of education.
Well, I feel like that's part of our evaluation, identifying that as a need, and then setting that as a priority for, for the year. So I don't, I don't know that it would, at least to me, I wouldn't expect that to necessarily happen at that night, but if we decide that that is what we want, then strategically planning that through the course of the year, you know, setting it as a goal even, for the board to have regular, you know, maybe it is every other month or something, then we do some kind of, even a half-hour education, something. I don't know.
Just make sure we're not wasting any of our hour and a half of time. Set an ambitious agenda.
Well, and you know what? I mean, sometimes these meetings are supposed to be an hour, and they go three or four hours, so I'm...
That's never happened, yeah.
I just, I mean, like, we might say it's an hour and a half on that night, but it might take longer. If we get into a good conversation, we don't need to be limited. I don't want to spend the night, but...
Good point.
Well, and Dr. Khan's passion is literacy, mine is music. So, yeah, I'm sure we each have our own, you know, so how do we exhibit our passion?
I do think that literacy is always a hot political topic at this point. I mean, there is, the state is debating the literacy bill. I don't know if you've broken open and read some of the things that are in there. It's pretty detailed, and maybe we need some awareness of what is being discussed. And I would like to, maybe even hear, you know, from my administrators on what they think is going on at the, in that discussion. But then, on the other hand, who knows what they're gonna come out with, so, yeah.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that doesn't happen in July.
Maybe we just check in in August and see what came out of the sausage making, whatever, so...
All right, so you heard, we want to see the questions ahead of time, we want a full agenda, we don't want to be bored.
Thank you. Policy, policy 5315, school wellness, second read, this is an action item. Please.
So thank you to Molly and Lori being with us tonight. Christine Cody wasn't available, and they were just gonna give a brief overview of the adjustments that were made from the suggestions last month. The advantage of a first and second read. I know they've highlighted those in the attachment also.
Yes, I think so.
It should be, but it doesn't sound like it, so just be loud.
There we go.
Now we're on. Hi, guys, thanks for letting us come back to wrap this up a bit. So at the May Board of Education meeting, the Student Wellness Committee proposed striking through the entire policy due to the volume and the extent of the proposed changes, making it pretty challenging for each individual suggested edit. Many of those revisions were minor grammatical things and language enhancements, and communication regarding existing wellness practices. The updates to the policy suggestive of new practices or practice changes are highlighted in the key revisions document, and we discussed it at the last meeting. Of note, two additions to the policy rules are being suggested based on the feedback from board members during the policy first read that occurred last month. Specifically, they fall under the foods provided outside of the school meal program section, under classroom-based food, and include adding the following statement "to increase the rationale behind limiting foods allowed in the classroom." I quote, "to prevent unfavorable medical outcomes for students with food allergies and other chronic illnesses impacted by food consumption," end quote. Additionally, we added, in order to clarify the rules pertaining to the nuts in the classroom, the addition of the sentence, quote, "at the elementary and middle schools, all classrooms will be nut-free," end quote. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Max, please.
I did got the email from Molly, thank you for sending the email, about possibly allowing ranch dressing or mayonnaise, you know, some kind of a, to help kids eat vegetables. Studies, as a professional gastroenterologist, and as any physician can, and you also agree to that, obesity is on the rise, and by 2050, the United States will be the most obese nation in the world. Right now, hepatitis C is the most common cause of liver cirrhosis. Again, by 2050, NASH cirrhosis, which is non-alcoholic status, hepatitis, second to obesity, will be the biggest risk factor for liver cirrhosis. So obesity is the major challenge, which kind of, which we're looking at, you know? So how do we, how do we encourage our students to eat vegetables and fruits? You know, it's recommended to have two servings of fruits and two, at least one to two servings of vegetables daily. And, of course, we can't control everything that happens at home, but we can definitely encourage what happens at the school. So egg has been a concern, but mayonnaise and salad dressings, egg is only a small part of it. So I had, I was talking before the board meeting, I was talking to them, and requesting to kind of consider if it's possible to just, egg is, you're not allowing whole-boiled eggs, we're just allowing ranch dressing with the, some fruits, like carrots, broccoli, to help, you know, eat, consume that, you know? Will that, in the, in the day, translate into kids actually eating, you know? More vegetables? Maybe, you know? But it's worth a shot. It's worth a shot because kids don't like to eat vegetables. Of course, most of the parents, we are parents here, we, it's a struggle time, you know? Eating broccoli means, you know, they don't want it, means, you know, yes, when you go to RFS, or, you know, send eggs, and they see this vegetables with a little of this dressing, wow, that looks so, kind of, you know? So, I kind of, you know, I'll definitely wanted to request, if possible, to consider if we can add to the snack, ranch dressing or something, to facilitate the vegetables as such. Again, what I wanted, our experts to also pitch in in this aspect.
Angie, please.
I totally appreciate everything you're saying, and I hear what you're saying. And kids don't like vegetables, 100%. I actually appreciated in this iteration of the policy the fact that we moved away from the misconception that the purpose of the policy was to promote certain ideals of what's a good food and what's a bad food, in terms of health and wellness. I think that was a problem with the previous policy, and I like that this has become a clean cut. We are limiting allergen exposure. And I appreciate the work that's gone into broadening the categories somewhat. And so, as much as I approve the sentiment, parents can send all the ranch that they want with vegetables in their school lunch. This is one snack for only in the classroom for the day. And this is, the purpose of this policy isn't to promote, again, categorizing best and worst food choices, it's to limit contact.
Well, I, my concern with, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree that the, the goal of this, and having been somebody who worked on this policy, the goal was to get away from good food, bad food, you know, things like that. On a very practical standpoint, I'm just picturing a whole room of kindergartners at snack time trying to open their little, like, Tupperwares with ranch dressing, and the mess that that might include. I think that we have maybe more opportunity, which I think is already happening with our hydroponic gardens and things, and to Mary's point from earlier, about maybe adding more fruits and vegetables into our school lunches, and getting away from, you know, chicken nuggets and, I forget what else you said, hamburgers or whatever. Yeah, cheese.
It is Wisconsin.
Where we, you know...
Yeah, but not 23 meals out of a, out of a month.
But I, I think that we might be able to make more headway in fruits and vegetables with our school lunches than with our snacks.
Yeah.
That would be my, go ahead.
I just don't like the fact that we're dictating to parents what they can and cannot send for children to, for their snack. I don't think that's our place.
I think it's our place to keep kids safe.
It is our place to keep kids safe, but I think a parent, we got a parent email that said, "Why can't we send, give teachers a list of the children that do have these certain allergies, and then teachers can make sure that these kids are separated during snack time?" I mean, you've been in a classroom. Yes, I have. It's a 10-minute turnaround period, do you really want to... I feel like the nurses have time to make those lists. I mean, I'm looking at this policy, that's what, nine pages long? This policy makes my flesh crawl, quite honestly, if I, if I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you. I think it's too pinpointed. I think it's too, it gives me nightmares of the COVID policy when we masked our kids, when we didn't have to mask our kids, and we're, we're trying to parent again, and I don't like it. I don't like it at all. I can't, I can't agree with it.
I was just, you know, I didn't know anything about snack time when I, my kids were, what's snack time? But, so, now I would delight in that snack time happens every, every day.
Yep.
Separate from lunch.
Yep.
Okay. And it's, this is just about snack time, not lunch.
Correct. Well, I mean, there's portions of this.
There are some, but the most of the restrictions are, are about snack time, because that's what teachers gotta do.
So for lunch, if a kid gets some vegetables with ranch, they can open and eat?
Yeah, correct. Because at lunchtime, the kids with allergies can identify and sit at a separate table, whereas in the classroom, that's just not possible. They can.
I agree with you.
That's also excluding...
Have, as someone who's been accidentally exposed to peanut in classrooms multiple times in my life, I'm just gonna disagree. I'm just wondering how many times we've called Franklin Fire Department for EpiPen situations, allergy situations? How many times have we called them? I think you included that in your report last time.
22 in the last five years, and having cared for those students.
That's really not that many in five years.
22 times in five years where a child almost had a fatal occurrence in our care, I would say is very serious.
I would disagree.
Okay.
Knowing that the outcome is truly, I mean, I don't have to explain it to you, is truly a life-threatening potential outcome, we look at three things, and that is, how can we somehow decrease the number of allergens in the classroom? How can we make it so that they are easily identifiable to teachers? So, to Dr. Rees' point, if you watch snack, there's so much going on there, so how can a teacher look and make sure that what Lori has isn't something that's gonna potentially be harmful to me? And how can they be somewhat containable? So that really is the concern about dips, is typically, it's gonna be something that comes in a container that's white. How does a teacher quickly look at it and make sure that that is something that I can be eating next to Lori? And that's not gonna potentially, like you said, the opening and spill and fling at Lori. We may have mentioned this last month, one of our occurrences was a student who took his milk and slammed it on the table, and it sprayed and got in the eyes of another student who had life-threatening allergies to dairy, who then had an anaphylactic reaction because of that exposure. So thinking about those kind of things, how do we minimize that liquid, easily spillable type of occurrence?
Is there, is there an opportunity to, to say there's no, nothing but water in elementary classrooms rather than lunch?
Don't say that.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think there's, I agree with Angie that, I appreciate that we're moving away from good foods, bad foods, and I agree with Debbie that our job is not to parent the kids, but to provide them a safe environment. And I often am surprised that we have to, that we, that we're not... I don't feel like we're working as partners sometimes. I feel like we're, we're, we're part of the nanny state, and I, and I don't like that. But I appreciate that this wellness policy has, is, is starting to move away from that, and I, and I feel like I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep going on that train in the future, and, in that regard. And, you know, the snack, look, I, maybe, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm quite lucky, because my kids will eat their vegetables all the time, and, and insist upon them. So I guess that, I guess that makes me lucky.
You did something right, Mike.
But, well, I don't doubt that has much to do with me. But, so, I would, I would move that we, I would move that we, that we approve revised policy 531, is it 5310 or 5315?
The former. 5315.
5315.
I can try to make a statement difference.
Please.
So, I think, you know, we maybe need to kind of convey this message to the parents that this is a snack policy, if your kid has, wants to have vegetables, you know, as lunchtime and all this stuff, you know? I'm more than welcome to kind of, you know, send, you know, whatever dressings you want and all that stuff. I think, and that definitely, as Mary said, you know, for the lunches, school lunches, if we can go away from cheese pizza, pizza is good, always good, but you know, I think one civic is more than sufficient, because it's carbs, calories. Steamed vegetables, you know, seems very yummy to me, you know? So somehow, if we can, salads and all this, if we can, and could take more of healthy vegetables as lunch options, that definitely can, you know, will facilitate some, hopefully, healthy eating habits and the problem of obesity, because we have to do whatever we can.
I agree with that, but I don't think that's, I mean, that's, that's not really part of this policy. What, what, I mean, providing different lunch options is a, is, is not, is not going to be covered in this policy. And perhaps that needs to be done at some point, and, and I'm not sure that we need to act in order to do that.
I think ultimately, this policy is, in, I mean, there's numerous aspects to the policy, but ultimately, keeping our kids safe is probably the most important job that we have here at the board table. And if this policy helps keep even 20 kids safe, it's more than done our job.
I second your motion.
Our motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed.
No.
Motion carries, thank you. Annual academic standards adoptions, Mrs. Bennon or Mr. Blessington? I'm not sure who.
Yeah, I'll, I can jump in on this. This is gonna be super brief, you, maybe that'll come with some disappointment or not, but I will be back on July 12th to ask for form... on July 12th to ask for formal approval. This is statutory requirement, approve our standards. It really lays that out. But wanted to give a first reading. If there's any additional questions that you had, I'll be coming, like it was alluded to by Ms. Bennon earlier, earlier in the meeting, that I'll be coming back to do a deeper dive on all of our curriculum areas in the fall, so.
And I'll just add that this is, this is something we do have to do every year. I know that was mentioned before, but this is something we have to do every year. We pride ourselves in Franklin at going further and then, than just the, than just what the, what the state mandates. And, and I'm sure we'll do that, but these need to be, this first reading is, is, should be sufficient, and we can talk about it further. I'm not sure anybody would have had time for, to ask any questions, but does anybody need any clarification? Or want to talk about, want to talk about this or ask questions?
How much detail, I mean, is the expectation that we read all of the?
Really, all you're doing is adopting a body of standards that we're going to work towards. So if you look at any standards, if you've been in a classroom, like, there are more standards than you could ever hit at a proficient level in all of them. So the work that Mr. Blessington knows with teaching and learning is prioritizing those standards, aligning them vertically, and then looking at best-aligned, like, resources to meet that curriculum. Right now, you're just approving, as required by the state, that this is the standards that we're tying that work to. So not approving it honestly just would put us in a hold on what kind of standards we're going to try to align to for all of these days that we have aligned this summer to work through our resources and our curriculum.
It's difficult to work through all the standards, Mary, but if you break it out and do a little bit every day, I don't, I mean, trust that these have been written by consortia that have spent hours and days putting them in place, so you have to take it with it. Yeah, a grain of salt that you're going to catch something that they didn't, but it's still interesting to, to go through them.
Thanks.
May I also have questions? Linda, please.
I, I didn't get time to look into these things, but I guess I would have.
It's the same as last year, just to note that also, so nothing's changed. So I appreciate that everybody honored that it was sent to today.
We're not approving until next, July.
Correct.
We are making a motion out.
That's correct.
Right, so I'm just saying, I, I don't know what's in the literacy one, but there'd be some, you know, I'll take a look at that.
The thing is, all of the standards documents include when they were last updated. So you can remind yourself, oh, this is nuisance last time, without having to go back and compare line by line. Sorry.
Yeah, I was just, I think if you're going to spend more time with the LA standards, I think that would be a great, a great spot for board members to really get up to speed of what those standards, what we want students to be able to do. So that would be some great light reading to do before I come back on July 12th.
And just briefly, so we have literacy, and then we also have English Language Arts. So crossover, why are they, why are they two different things?
It's two different ways to refer to it. It's really all that it comes down to.
There's two different standards.
Right.
Two different documents.
So we, do you want a definition of those brought back to the next meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, or.
Okay, this is really just a standard, can we move ahead with aligning to the Wisconsin State Standards? And continue our work to perform in the best way that we can for our learners. That's really all we're approving tonight. So, not even approving tonight, my apologies. That's what we're doing a first read on tonight.
One thing I'm, I've learned from Bob is that literacy is a more generic term, the standards of which should be embedded in all discipline areas. Whereas English Language Arts tends to fall more into what we more traditionally think of as English. Does that make any sense? So students should be striving to achieve literacy standards in their social studies class. They should be, you know, it has more to do with proficiency and.
Education likes to be wordy.
And education likes to be wordy.
Yeah.
Well, there were two books on it, so, all right.
All right, everyone. Any more questions, comments? The treasures report is available in the Board Docs library, Board Liaison Reports. First have to apologize to Darlene. She's, she, she made me an editor so that I could see the document, and she's clearly never going to do that again. I messed up the document.
And the main reason that had to go to our personal email is again because of this situation that technologically, because we're board members, we can't access the Google suite of tools. And I still just can't buy that there's not a workaround there.
I'm with you on that.
I was just going to say the same thing. I think that in this district where we employ so many technologically savvy people, there must be.
I like to keep my emails clean.
That, we should not be conducting board business in our personal email. Even if it's just a survey about which committee we want to be on, which is the only thing that has come to my personal email, but.
So the only thing that has come to personal email is this, and we've talked about that there's probably other tools. We do not need to be utilizing the Google suite to do that.
Okay.
And you won't get it through the Google suite moving forward. So I ask, and thank you for your patience, use your personal account. It's not typically what we've done. It's the first time we've done it in my time here, actually. But that's why in this case it was carried over and used, but it won't be in the future, and we'll find a different tool that's not through the Google suite and easy to access. I agree. It should be through your work email or your board email.
We usually get a paper pencil.
Yeah, we could use that.
You know, and we mark it down.
Well, sometimes it's a stone.
I was unaware and more than willing.
Darlene, we're going to do a paper and pencil for those that would like to pick that up or mail it, and we can do something separate.
Or print it out.
I printed out and gave it to him.
Print it out and give it to me, or scan it to me and, scan it and send it.
I just, I, I mean, this is not related to the board liaison stuff. I, I really truly believe that there must be a way to set up Google stuff in the district so that board members have access to what we need, and it's not, I mean, how many times, Darlene, do I have to say I don't have access to that? Like, it's.
Yes, right, every time we send something.
So I've, I've heard that that's an issue, and I will work to rectify it, so.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Noted. So we look forward to our liaison positions.
Can I report on my, because I'm still, we just had, one of my board liaison roles is for the Education Foundation, and we just had our fantastic golf outing on Friday. It was huge success, even though it was hugely cold. But, I mean, I'm, I love being on that, being a board liaison for that group, and I just, it was very exciting to see the whole community come together and our board members who were there and administrators and golf cart drivers. And it was really, and it was, initial numbers have come back that it was highly successful, so.
And we, and we appreciate the, the administration participation. It was fabulous. To have so many there, I think the people that were there appreciated it. Of course, board members were playing and participating in every way. I think it, I think it turned out well.
I mean, it was cold.
It was cold.
At least it didn't rain.
No, it was not just me being cold. It was legitimately.
It was cold.
My, my other board liaison role would be to Forest Park Middle School. I finished that. But our final thing was our eighth grade promotion ceremony, which was fun to see all those.
Heard you got it done in an hour, so congratulations.
It was not me.
I think it was 58 minutes, so.
It was 58.
Outstanding. That's a good attention span.
No, I, it was like a minute and a half, I think I talked. I don't know, but it just.
Don't encourage her.
Anyway.
Were you saying you would like the liaison role?
I was just going to say, next year. Point is, it was really exciting to see in that space. The last, you know, the last time I was at that event, it was virtual during COVID. Prior to that, it was in the high school where you really, it just wasn't a great setup to see the kids. And I just think, and there was a lot of positive feedback from our community, that everyone could, could be there and see their kids. And it was a nice celebration for the end of the year, and the kids.
No, they had their dance right after, right there, so perfect. Get it done.
One false loop, and food. Although, you could work on the, the audio though, because could not hear the chorus at all. It was pretty hard to sit there knowing they were trying their best to sing when nobody could hear them.
Always room for improvement.
Yes.
My, I did meet with Mike as a, for the high school. We discussed about possibilities of for the freshmen, not for the freshmen, but the sophomores and juniors, somehow if we can have the ACT preparation more regulated and more encouraged and including some kind of, in a day activity where all the kids will be required to kind of, you know, attend that preparation and progress on that. Mike did agree to my kind of suggestion that it's like a, having good ACT scores is like having a savings in your bank account. You might use it, you might not use it. If you go to a technical college, if you go to business, it's not long, you might not have to use it. But what happens from ninth grade to 12th grade, what you decide, you never know. And things having that good scores and always helps you. So we talked about possibly somehow creating some kind of a, like a course module where especially the juniors and the sophomores would be encouraged to take it, and Mike was saying that we can even possibly, working with administration, make it some kind of a mandatory that, you know, take it, utilize this module, and maybe that will help us elevate, increase possibly some of our scores. Although, we talked about also is that we have to do the work at the elementary level, especially with English and literacy reading, you know, which is a main point, so it's on working focus.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I did meet with Southwood Glenn at the year-end check-in. It was interesting that they didn't meet their goals, but they, they were on track in the January, February, and they, somehow it didn't happen at the end of the year. But they're looking into that, and her staffing was solid in terms of only two people were leaving, and they were, got excellent hires. So a good year, so.
I just sat on my social media and looked at all the pictures of the graduates going back to the elementary schools and wept quietly. That was my main engagement. Silent weeping.
Silent weeping.
Thank you.
Looking ahead, community-wise, we have the parade on the second, the Fourth of July parade on the second.
Yep.
Yes.
Who's going to be there? Raise your hand. All right, we have a quorum.
We're, Darlene's already posting that meeting. She'll have the candy to pick up and everything to go.
I don't know. I was going to ask who's the vehicle.
That's a great question to ask. Does your son want to drive again this year? That'd be outstanding. He's got the bus vehicle, right?
I was going to say, otherwise.
He probably has more ducks to show off, so. Now I'm really sad I'm going to miss it. I like duck.
There's always a minivan or something.
Well, we do have the candy tonight, so if somebody wants to take it with them, we could do that too, otherwise just check in. We do have the candy already, so if someone wants to grab it tonight, you can, otherwise, just set up an appointment with Darlene to grab it.
I'll come with it.
Perfect. And if a car doesn't work, well, it's normal. We'll call local dealers. I don't know. We'll figure it out. See who's got a vehicle.
Vicki's car is on Deer Brook Court this summer, so that one's not available.
What?
Vicki's Firebird isn't around, so that's usually our backup. Sorry.
Go on, minivan. Is that bad for you guys?
I think we're done. We've gone off the rails.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C for discussion of district administrator evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Dr. Khan?
Here. Oh, aye.
I knew you were here. Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bukowski?
Here.
I knew that too.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, thank you. We are in closed session at 7:45. School board member comments. Oh, we need to open the door. School board member comments.
Comments-wise, I would just, and I know this was kind of a fluke thing today, but we can't get, like, meeting information stuff the day of the meeting. I know it was a total fluke thing, but just for, that's, that's just really hard to get that kind of last-minute stuff on anything different than that.
Agree, and that was a conversation that we had.
Yeah, and I know it was a fluke thing today, but.
Nobody likes to be surprised, and that's, and I, noted.
Can I just have forms with missing parts?
What?
Forms with missing parts because the board president edited it.
No one's allowed to touch the Google forms anymore.
That was embarrassing.
Mary had something to.
Mary, please.
So I, I got a correspondence from just a parent regarding some issues with Robinwood and traffic kinds of concerns. My daughter has, all three kids have talked about their little walk to high school. I mean, and there's a guy, Kevin, I think his name is Schlitter, who's I've corresponded with about different streetlights and stoplights and things. I mean, do we, would we ever have somebody come so they can say where there's a forum for safety concerns? Because clearly, parents have them, I have them, kids have them, and it's only a matter of time, I think, unfortunately, before something truly tragic does happen. But, and Franklin's kind of noted for bad driving. I mean, I've read articles where Franklin is noted for bad drivers. So I don't know if it's our role or our lane to have somebody from the city come and talk about school safety.
I, I went to, and I should have noted this in the, when we were talking about school and community engagements. Andy Daniels went to a, a city meeting, we're talking about traffic ordinances and, and I joined him there, although I was very late because I, something else. But the, after the meeting, I was talking with Andy for a couple of minutes, and the commissioner of the, of the city board that we were talking to came out and said that what a great interaction it was with a member of the schools and how he looks forward to furthering that relationship. And so I think we're gaining some, I think we're gaining some inroads into being more of a partner with the city in these things. And, and being a partner, not a, we should do this and we should do that, and this is the way it is, and we're not discussing it. This is what I'd like to do.
But would it be fair to say if people do have those concerns, just make sure they get forwarded to Annalee and Mike? So that as those meetings are happening, all of the accurate information is in place.
Yeah, not necessarily me, but Annalee and, and.
God, you want to hear about traffic, now that you're not driving a bus.
Well, Andy.
Yeah, they could come to me and then we'll work with, depending on what the safety concern is, I'd probably go to Andy Daniels on the safety team that we all work with, or otherwise if needed, right? Like, it helps to disperse them to who's kind of leading what the concern is really when we get to it.
I mean, I responded to him just very generically, and his response to me was, I'm going to the city and I'm going to speak and blah, blah, blah. So it wasn't really even, I don't know why he kind of reached out to me anyway.
Right.
Not our, not our thing, but he was resolving it on his own, but it was, it was Robinwood, and I'm like, well, you know. But, yeah, I just.
And that's specifically an area that they talked about at the meeting that Mike referenced, so.
Okay.
They're working on resolutions or ideas, so.
Good to know. That's good to know.
All right, anybody else? Future agenda items, annual academic standards adoptions, coherence plan, end-of-year report, board evaluation, excuse me, building and grounds, annual report, master facilities study, education for employment update, 2023-24 policy review schedule. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I just ask one more question?
Please.
There was a referendum word in here somewhere. What was that about? Somebody, there was mention of a referendum.
It's a master facility study, not referendum, because that would be a board discussion after we'd have the information in front of us.
Because I just heard somebody mention referendum somewhere in one of these reports.
It shouldn't be in there as referendum. It should be master facility study.
Got it.
So is the agenda revised then, after?
Today you got the revised agenda, correct.
Which included more than just the addition of the.
That was the only thing changed on it, which we've referenced, we've forecasted out.
Has potential referendum discussion on it.
Thank you. I just corrected that. And it was corrected earlier today.
Oh, that was also changed today.
Okay, correct.
Got it, okay.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:47.
Here, Max. Here.
Not here this time.
So when are, when is, what meetings is the master facility? Is this all July or you're talking?
No, it's, we always forecast two meetings out. It follows the same process, so it's next. And I spoke in my opener on what we're talking about next month, so it's the adoption of the standards, and then it's the coherence plan update.